Illustration on the front.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the acting mayor, councillor Alison Ritchie.
Hello and welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrmaurminia people as the traditional and original custodians of the land on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence tonight's meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. And if I may take this opportunity with the indulgence of the meeting to acknowledge and send our thoughts to all those that have and continue to be affected by the recent weather events across Tasmania. I would also like to recognise with deep appreciation the amazing work of the Tasmanian SES, Tasmania Police, the Tasmania Fire Service, TAS networks, of course, local council staff across the state, and all levels of government that have been responding to assist in this challenging weather. Our thoughts and thanks with you all at this challenging time. Well, good evening all and welcome to the Clarence City Council meeting of Monday the 9th of September 2024. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege. And there is also a link to the agenda papers on council's website. If we move to agenda item two, apologies, naturally, we have the mayor away, councillor Blomley, also councillor Darko has a leave of absence, and I also inform the meeting that I've just received advice from councillor Walker, that he is on the way and will be joining us shortly. Item number three, declarations of interest of councillors or close associates. Are there any declarations from councillors this evening? There being none, we will now head into our omnibus items. Item 4.1, confirmation of the minutes. I note that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 19th of August 2024 have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? There being none, we'll move to 4.2, mayor's communication. 4.2.1, mayor's diary entries. I table the mayor's diary entries from the 20th of August to the 9th of September 2024, including those entries undertaken by myself on behalf of the mayor. Thank you very much. I move to 4.2.2, mayoral correspondence. There being none, I'll move to 4.3, council workshops, and I note that those workshops are as listed in the agenda. Moving to 4.4, tabling of petitions. CEO, are there any petitions?
Thank you, acting mayor. None that I'm aware of.
Thank you, CEO. I will ask councillors, do they have any petitions to table this evening? There being none, thank you. We'll move on to 4.5, reports from outside bodies. Councillor Walker not yet being here. Councillor Warren, do we have anything from TAS Waste South? No, thank you. There being nothing from TAS Water or the Greater Hobart Committee. I will now ask colleagues, are there any other reports from council or special committees and other representative bodies for tabling? There being none, thank you. We will move to 4.6, weekly briefing reports. The reports of the 19th and 26th of August and the 2nd of September 2024 have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James?
Thank you, Adam Chairman. I refer council to the weekly briefing report of the 19th of August, and in particular to the Opossum Bay public toilet replacement. It says, and I quote, "We advise that the installation contractor can commence installation of the prefabricated toilets ahead of schedule and has nominated an early commencement date", unquote. Can I be advised as to whether the prefabricated toilets are a permanent fixture or are they temporary?
Thank you councillor James. Perhaps Miss Coombs?
Through you, acting mayor, yes, they are permanent toilets. They're just coming as a prefabricated unit for ease of install, but they will be permanently located at Opossum Bay.
Thank you very much. Further question? Thank you councillor James.
Yes, indeed, Adam Chairman. The 2nd of September 2024, in relation to the abuse campaign update, on page six. What it says is in the penultimate paragraph, "The intention is for council and other councils to build awareness of the impacts of poor behaviour on staff and elected members in the lead-up to a statewide local government Tasmania campaign to kick off early in the new year." My question is, given that Mr and Mrs Marsh have been banned from three meetings to attend this place, does that fall within these terms of reference, that the awareness of the impacts of poor behaviour on staff and elected members? Does that preclude that what has perceived as being the case of banning the Marshes for three meetings until October?
Thank you councillor James. I'll ask the CEO to respond.
Thank you. Councillor James, I'm not sure I understand the question. Can you please repeat that?
Yes, in relation to the matter in relation to awareness of the impacts of poor behaviour on staff and elected members in the lead-up to the state LGAT. So my question is, it's behaviour on staff, presumably is that from the public and on elected members? And is that one of the reasons why in fact the Marshes were banned from attending meetings in this place for three meetings, three consecutive meetings?
Thank you councillor James. Through you, acting mayor. The ban which you referred to was in relation to separate issues and it wasn't contemplated by, you know, in the context of the campaign. But there will be some obvious crossovers there in terms of conduct within this chamber being captured by that campaign as well.
Just as a supplementary, if you don't mind.
No, I don't.
Thank you. Good.
Is this on the same topic, councillor?
It is, yeah. It is. So, just thank you, Mr CEO. The question I have is in relation to the awareness of the impacts of poor behaviour on staff and elected members. Is that something that is coming into the question of the impact that people who attend meetings in the public gallery, that they may be able to make some comment or something which is derogatory or in relation to elected members and staff, and therefore that falls within the lead-up to the statewide campaign for abuse campaign that's been decided or will be decided at all.
Thank you councillor James. CEO, thank you.
Thank you through you, acting mayor. My response to that, if I understand the question properly councillor James, is that the campaign that we're discussing is about ensuring proper professional behaviour, no matter what the interaction is with council staff or with councillors. And the relationship between that campaign and our work health and safety obligations is to ensure that that conduct, no matter where it occurs, is that conduct is appropriate and professional and does not become abusive or derogatory or in any other way affect a person from a health and safety perspective. So the important point is that in respect to our statutory duties and my obligations to this chamber and this council, I am looking at that from the point of view of our health and safety obligations, irrespective of where a particular campaign, in this case, the avoidance of abuse campaign, is going. My overarching issue is about health and safety.
Thank you. Thank you very much. There being no further questions, I note colleagues that we are at the end of our omnibus items, so may I please have a mover? Thank you very much councillor Chong and a seconda. Thank you very much councillor Going. I'll put that motion, all those in favour. Who's against? Councillor Mulder? Were you voting? Sorry, didn't see you?
But not quick enough.
I am watching. Not long enough. He's gone. Okay, thank you very much. That's unanimous. That's right. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to public question time, 5.1. CEO, are there any questions and/or answers to questions on notice, please?
Thank you, acting mayor. I have tonight questions from three people, so I propose to deal with the questions and the answers in the same item, if that's okay.
Yes.
So our first question is from Mrs Sharon Von Berto, and Miss Von Berto provides two questions. First question is in relation to the Clarence elector poll. And the question is, can the council CEO obtain advice from the Tasmanian Electoral Commission and make it public as to the validity of councillor Mulder's assertion in the council meeting of 19th of August 2024, that where a voter left the second elector poll question blank, brackets, "Do you support building the AFL High Performance Centre across both Rosney Parklands and Charles Hand Park?", that this rendered a vote, a yes vote, informal for the first question. The first question was, do you support building the AFL High Performance Centre entirely within Rosney Parklands? And if I'm of the understanding the two questions were counted independently, sorry, as I'm of the understanding the two questions were counted independently of each other, the answer to that question is as follows. Clarification was sought from the Tasmanian Electoral Commission, who advised that an elector who voted formally for question one but informally, for example, blank, for question two, would still have their vote counted for question one. That is, an informal vote for one question would not make a formal vote of the other question informal. Mrs Von Berto's second question relates to the AFL High Performance Centre. The question is, with the council's tracks and trails working group's purpose being to provide recommendations to council through the city development advisory committee on tracks and trail projects throughout the city, and to provide guidance on the implementation of the council's tracks and trail strategy, has that group provided any advice or recommendations on the use or otherwise of the Charles Hand Park, Charles Hand Memorial Park and/or Rosney Parklands for the AFL High Performance Centre as compared the most recent draft City Heart Plan? The answer to that question is no. Once designs have been finalised, there is expected to be an opportunity to consider track and trail development opportunities within the context of the City Heart Plan. Next question comes from Mr Bradley Walker. And that question is in relation to tracks constructed between Fair Isle Terrace and Cunha Reserve. The question is as follows. On the 17th of July 2023, and following up on the 30th of October 23 and the 20th of November 2023, I asked questions in relation to a track construction between Fair Isle Terrace and Cunha Reserve, which was included in the council's 2324 budget provisions. I note council have now seen the completion of this track construction, and I asked to what grade has this track been constructed, how much was spent for this project's completion, and what contribution has the developer put towards this project? Noting over 90% of the track's construction fits within condition nine of SD 2011/30, requiring the developer to construct this track. The answer to that question is that the section of track completed has been constructed to a class three track standard under the Australian Walking Track Standards. The full $40,000 in the budget was expended on the planning work permits required, as this track is within an area covered by a conservation covenant, and on the permits required. The requirements of the developer were for a class five track, which is a lower grade than the final track constructed, which council are liaising with the developer for their contribution towards. This track is part of a larger network of tracks in Rokeby Hills, and with which council will continue to develop over a number of years. Final question tonight is from Mr and Mrs Victor and Joanne Marsh, and relates to the geotech and environmental assessments of Rosney Parks. The question is, have the council received briefing reports, briefings in relation to the geotech and environmental assessment of Rosney's parks, in particular the status of the swift parrot habitat? And if not, when are the council expecting to be able to inform the community about these? The answer to that question is no. The reports are held by the Department of State Growth and are therefore subject to release by them. Council has not yet received any briefing on these reports. That concludes the questions and the answers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, CEO. We'll now move on to 5.3, answers to previous questions taken on notice. And I note that the response to Mr Fig has been listed in the agenda, so we will take that as read. We will now move on to 5.4, questions without notice. Are there any questions from the gallery this evening? We have one. Thank you very much and welcome. Before we start, I'll just remind members of the gallery to be as clear and succinct as possible, reminding you that there is no privilege at council meetings, and also to start with your name and suburb, please.
Madam Chair, Brian Chapman, Bowery. I got the Clarence News today in the Post, which was nice, a spring one. Second paragraph on the second page, first paragraph on the second page, had its meeting on 8th of July 2024. The council unanimously passed a motion by councillor Wendy Kennedy to develop a community awareness campaign to address poor behaviour and conduct towards both councillors and council staff. I feel quite strongly about anyone bullying anyone. So I might be wrong, but nothing seems to have eventuated yet, maybe it has. At the time, it may have been inferred that the motion was pointed to the Save Rosney Parks group or members thereof, or due to the upcoming elector poll. Three questions, right, basically that relate to it. Is or was that the case? Is the campaign proceeding now the elector poll is complete? And is there still a problem with bullying or harassment?
Thank you, Mr Chapman. And I'll ask the CEO to respond. There's a bit in there, and obviously, we've already spoke, probably provided you with some updates with the weekly briefing report discussions that we've just had. But nevertheless, I'll ask the CEO to fill in some of the other gaps. Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, acting mayor. This question overlaps with some of our earlier responses to councillor James. Yes, there is an intention that that campaign will proceed. We are working on that at the moment with other councils and the local government association of Tasmania, and we hope to have that moving in coming weeks.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions from the gallery? I'm happy to entertain a supplementary, yes?
Was there inference against the Save Rosney Parks group at the time?
Yeah, thank you, CEO.
Thank you. Apologies for missing that element of the question. No, there was no particular influence against anyone. The trigger for the campaign, and I don't want to verbal councillor Kennedy here, so please feel free to weigh in councillor Kennedy. There was a broad range of inappropriate behaviour being experienced by councillors and council staff from a range of people, not just one particular group. So it was very broad in that sense. But there was a large number of people involved.
Thank you, CEO. Thank you, Mr Chapman. There being no further questions from the gallery. We'll move on to item six, deputations by members of the public. I believe there...
Thank you, acting mayor. No, there are no deputations tonight.
There are no? Okay, moving on. Item seven, planning authority matters. I advise that council now intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act 1993. And move on to item 7.1, planning application, 526 Pass Road, Cambridge Drive through Coffee Shop Food Services. Do we have a mover? Councillor Mulder. Seconda? Councillor James, thank you very much. Councillor Mulder.
I thought for a moment there we had an anti-caffe movement. It's a strange point of order.
Second mayor, are we moving the... You mean the motion? I was about to...
Oh, yes, in fact, thank you councillor Hume. We do have the amended. Before we start, councillor Mulder, if I may, there is, there has been a slight amendment circulated, and I might just go through that for the benefit of those people at home who may not be able to see it on the screen. The only amendment to the original motion that was circulated is in the advice section, an additional number E, which reads, "Any works on site or service relocation should consider the future likelihood of the extension of pedestrian access adjacent to Pass Road." So we are in fact debating the amended motion as put forward by councillor Mulder, now seconded by councillor James.
I formally assure you that that is the motion.
Thank you.
Mr, madam mayor, this is a, madam acting mayor, this is a very sort of straightforward, simple application. It's a disused site that has been a eyesore, as are many others. But of course, council is in no position to force people to develop their own property, and if they're left in dissolution. My only issue is, of course, is I wonder why we simply didn't redevelop and upgrade the existing old service station, rather than building an entire new, rather than plonking a new container there. But once again, I'm not the one spending the money, neither's council. So these are questions that are for the developer. The only amendment to it, which is, the amendment which I saw as a result of discussions at the agenda brief on Friday, were the fact that no provision has been made for pedestrian or multi-user access, or bike lanes, or any of those sorts of things. Whereas clearly at the other end of Pass Road, all the redevelopment and all the money that council's spending there has all got these sorts of developments. Now, it's a bit pointless spending all this money, bringing it all the way up to Connor Place with multi-user pathways and pedestrian and cyclists' access, and then stopping it at Connor Place without the prospect of, as developments occur for the last section, of including those particular amenities. As a result of the discussions, the chief planner has come up with a very sensible solution, which says, "We can't impose this in an isolated section." But there are some nearby developments, some subdivisions, some change of use in planning zones, which will actually connect it back to the existing Cambridge Road. So that's why I asked that we at least flag this with the developers. So that if there's any works to be done on what would be the future pathway and the future access, then at least they're flagged in it, and so we can make sure there's no developments. The other issue I had was that this isn't actually connected to the sewerage scheme. And I had some deep, I had some concerns about the fact that there's a current easement, which is basically not reticulated sewerage, but actually into a... not reticulated sewerage, but actually into a into an open space area where there's plenty of room now for a onsite sewerage treatment facility. I'm just trying to think of the correct terminology. But what I have been given assurances is that if and when the other development occurs, that will be connected to the sewerage system as it applies to Mornington. And then this particular development will be required to connect to that because it will then be at the boundary. So all in all, it's quite a good development. I hope it, I wish it well. I'm not too sure that the traffic movements in this area are suitable, but that's not my decision. That's a decision for council to make. So for the developer to make, because they are spending the money. The only other issue that I had with it, and it's nothing to do with this particular application, but it's the zoning there. If you look at this road, the next door property is in Mornington. This property is in Cambridge, even though if anyone said, I'm going to Cambridge, they wouldn't go anywhere near this particular property. And then on the other side of the road, it's Mornington again. This is just nonsense, you know. Locality should be based on watersheds. And the obvious thing is to call this whole area Mornington, and then when you get to the top of the hill, it then becomes Clarence Plains. But anyway, that's a side issue and it's some of the nonsense that you go here. So if you're going for a drive-in coffee shop at Mornington, at Cambridge, please make sure you don't go to Cambridge.
Thank you. Councillor James.
As a matter of fact, Mayor, I don't want to say any more other than that it's becoming a reasonable explanation to have the advice sort of attached to this. And I think from the discussions we had on Friday at the briefing, that it's, it provides some sort of clarity, I think, to the developer that there are some matters here that need to be addressed. And notwithstanding its advice only, it does in fact, I believe, play an important role in future development of the area. And also laying the foundations of what council believes ought to be considered on a long-term basis. And therefore, having this advice attached to the motion or to the amended motion is, in my opinion, a great way in which we can use that tool to be able to add a little bit more depth to the application and therefore be able to flag our long-term tensions of what development we believe is appropriate for the area. I support the motion.
Thank you, councillor James. Are there any other speakers to the motion? There being none, I will invite councillor Mulder for a right of reply.
I've got three minutes, which I might use, Miss.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare that unanimous. Thank you very much. We will move on to item, sorry, council now concludes its deliberations as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act nineteen ninety three. And we will now move to item eight, reports of officers. There are no petitions tabled as per previous council meeting. We'll move to eight point two, eight point two point one, Bayview Secondary College Sporting Precinct feasibility study and business case community consultation. Do we have a mover? Yes, councillor Hunter, thank you. And a second, councillor Kennedy, thank you. Councillor Hunter.
As per the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy.
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Mulder.
Surprise, surprise. There are a couple of issues with this. This is a sports plaza per magnifique. With cost estimates in the region of sixty million dollars. The community's just been through a highly controversial programme, where a similar sized building funded not by the ratepayers, but caused a lot of division and angst. And here we are, without funding secured, contemplating a sports plaza, which could very well cost the residents of this city somewhere in the region of fifty to sixty million dollars unfunded from anywhere else. Imagine what that's going to do to your rating. And here we have a sports plaza. We have a number of clubs that are in difficulty, that are having trouble paying their council fees, their rents for the properties that occurred. And as far as I can recall, not one of them is very keen to move into this sports plaza. And then on the other issue, it's been built predominantly on what was once a road reservation, but is now a walking track, which is, which connects the Glebe Hill back to Clarence Plains. In fact, it is a parkland. And I am wondering where everyone else is running around about how we plan to spend sixty million dollars of ratepayers money, not AFL state government money, but sixty million dollars, fifty, sixty million of ratepayers money on this lovely serene creekside parkland. The irony, of course, doesn't escape all that many. I know this is going out to consultation. And I know that we're out there. But are we prepping the community for a facility that we cannot afford? And we're right in here. Have we learnt nothing from the Cambridge Primary School experience where the education department was all for gung-ho, gung-ho, build this, build that, build that at the last minute? No, we're not going to build this, but we still want you to build this for us. Now, the state government is either committed to this, in which case they will stump up the money. And the federal government is either committed to this, in which case they will stump up the money, as they did, for the High Performance Centre in the Parklands. Or we're going out to consultation for a mirage project that we cannot afford to build. And all we're doing is creating an expectation that it's not going to head. I really think we need to get some funding commitments from the relevant players before we even contemplate about rushing out to the community and asking them what their views of it. Of course, they'll want it. We haven't quite yet worked out whether they're prepared to pay for it.
Are any further speakers? Councillor James.
I'll to councillor Hume because normally if he follows me, he normally has some comments to make about my comments. But nevertheless, let's wait and see. Look, this is a huge project. And may I say from the outset, though, I need to correct councillor Mulder. His opening comments was that it's going to be a sixty million dollar project that the ratepayers of Clarence will have to foot. That's not correct, incorrect, because the sums at the moment and the business case that's going out to consultation is a tripartite, basically a funding arrangement. Fifty, fifty-nine million divided three ways. Twenty million from the feds, twenty million from the state and twenty million generally from the council. Now, council has in its forward estimates sort of locked in a few dollars of approximately eight million down the track. And that can be basically used in that, for that particular purpose, as part of the funding. But at the same time, there's no guarantees that we're going to get any funding from the federal government. And a few years ago, we sought to have the Seven Mile Beach Sporting Precinct developed. And that was going to cost at the time approximately fourteen million dollars, of which, I think the federal government was approached, I stand corrected on that. But nevertheless, it was one of the tiers of government. And they declined. So we had the seven million sort of sitting there and had been earmarked for that. And it has been now basically in the papers that are before us. It has been now redirected to the Bayview Secondary College Sports Precinct. Now, if the twenty million is met by the federal government, and if the twenty million is obviously provided by the state government, then council will have to pick up the twenty million. Now, if you try to work out how are we going to pay for that? Then, okay, I mentioned there is eight million in the forward estimates, which is, it is a contribution towards it. But when we were discussing this a little while ago, it would have attributed to about nine percent in the rates if we were to lock in that twenty million, even though the eight million has sort of been redirected from Seven Mile Beach. So by going out to consultation, okay, it's merely to gauge the public opinion and whether or not it's going to be a good thing for Roqueby. And it has been acknowledged that there is a shortage of playgrounds and sporting grounds within the city. And therefore, that may trigger a positive response. But my concern here is that part A of the motion states, amongst other things, note the findings and recommendations of the feasibility study and business case, approve the release of this study and business case for the community in stakeholder consultation. So I'm just wondering as to whether or not it would seem as though that the community is sort of mathematically inclined to be able to do the sums and look at the contributions from the three tiers of government. And I would like to put local government in there, even though we're not recognising the constitution. But nevertheless, the fact of the matter is that I don't think that the public out there would necessarily understand, or they may make the comment that there is capability of this council to be able to foot the bill to the tune of twenty million sometime down the track. So I just feel that, okay, if we're going to go out, there's been a lot of work put into this and look at the at the amount of work that has been done. So perhaps we should let it go and make sure that it has some sort of airing and there is some positive comment from the, from the community in relation to this. I still think it's a lot of false expectations in this particular project. But then again, let's let it run as it pours.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Hume.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Look, what we've got here is a project that's, I guess you could say it's aspirational. But it's something that's designed to meet some fairly significant future sporting facility needs within our community. And those are needs that there's going to be pressure on the council to meet, you know, regardless of whether or not we proceed with this proposal. Now, I think that in going out to consultation, we can manage expectations. I do credit people with the intelligence to understand that this proposal is not fully funded and that this is something that we're working on as a as a concept, as a master plan. But we do need to get, if we are going to start seeking state and federal contributions, I do think we need to begin feedback on the proposal before we do because we need to present to the state and federal government, although, mind you, the state government has committed eight million dollars already. But we do need to present something that's shovel-ready and they need to have some expectations of what's actually going to get built. I believe if we go to them for grant funding with something that's not shovel-ready, before we then go out to consultation, then we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. We need to consult our community on what they want this to look like and what they believe the important sporting recreation needs are to be met. So that we have something to present when we go cap in hand looking for funding. Now, mind you, we may not be able to raise the forty million dollars through some kind of tripartite funding agreement. And then we'd need to make some tough decisions at that point about, you know, whether we proceed with this project and what, you know, the impact should be on our ratepayers. Going back to my earlier comment that, you know, these sporting needs are going to need to be met or at least there will be pressure on us to meet them in the future. But having said that, there's also a possibility that we go out to consultation, refine this proposal and then end up getting, you know, one or two levels of government putting in fifty million dollars or sixty million dollars. That's a possibility as well. And taking some of the pressure off our ratepayers to fund, you know, one third as is proposed in the business case. So, you know, let's just see where it goes. But we, you know, we have an opportunity here. This is something that's been worked on for quite some time. People are aware of the proposal already, so, you know, in terms of managing expectations, let's let's acknowledge that it is already out there in the community. There is an awareness that there is a proposal and a push to build some, you know, a fairly major sporting complex at Bayview College. And, you know, I don't see, I don't see a problem with that in terms of consulting the community. You know, and that necessarily creating expectations that this is all going to go ahead. People understand that it is contingent on funding. But we should consult because, you know, what would our community say if we didn't? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Any further, councillor Chong?
And I echo many of councillor Hume's comments. And I would point out that section one point two in the report explicitly mentions the eight million that's been committed by the Tasmanian government, but also says additional funding from the Tasmanian and/or the federal government is required for the project to go ahead. There is no expectation and we are not going out to the public to say, we will fund this ourselves. We expect to have to go to other people. And as councillor Hume has said, we need to go with a project that has been consulted, that is shovel-ready. Perhaps not quite shoveled, but digger-ready perhaps. Project of this size, shovel won't cut it. But having said that, you know, we need something that we can go out to look for funding with. The other comment I'd like to make is, we know from our analysis that Clarence Plains is going to be one of the fastest growing areas in our municipality. It is going to have a large number of people by the end of this decade. We need to be thinking ahead for the facilities that we will need in that area as it continues to grow up. We can't wait. We're not, no, I won't make a rude comment about ports. Sorry, I almost did. But we need to plan ahead. This is us going to our community to talk about planning ahead.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Any further speakers? Councillor Walker?
Thank you, Acting Mayor, and apologies all for my belated arrival. I think everybody has made a contribution so far that has elements I agree with. And I would make this point, yes, if you go through there, it acknowledges the fact that this is unfunded. I don't think it does that enough. I actually think you almost need a big red flashing siren to say, we have no cash for this. It really needs to be upfront. We cannot lower expectations low enough as far as the amount of money that we have in the drawer to get this happening. Now, that said, elements that have been raised go around the population growth. That was a point I was going to make because this is an area that is going to undergo an enormous amount of population. It's an amazing concept. I'm looking forward to the feedback we get back on it. And yes, the costs are a big amount of money, but I would make this point. When you take along- When you take a long term plan, when you find a suitable flat piece of land that can accommodate a facility and you bring people together, you try and get consensus, that's the way that you can end up with something pretty magnificent. Yeah, it's going to take a longer time, but this is how we should be doing it. And I did note some allusion to what I'm now going to call the Daryl Kerrigan High Performance Centre, because basically like his pool room snooker table where it needs to be built on a slope and maybe the ball's just going to start rolling down to match the way it is. But if you look at how that project's being managed versus how this one is, this is how things can be done. So, again, every page should be marked, we don't have the cash for this. But in the absence of that, the other elements of trying to get community input and collaboration are worthy, there's a lot of time that's been gone into this and I think staff efforts are over the long term to get this to where it is ready for consultation. And let's get out.
Thank you. Councillor Warren?
Thank you, acting mayor. The previous three speakers have said everything that I was going to raise. I just want to add how nice it is to have a proper professional business case that actually quantifies the economic benefits associated with this project rather than a recent project where there was a lot of talk about the economic benefit but no evidence to how that would play out. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Warren. And any further speakers? If not, write of reply. Councillor Hunter?
Thank you. This is quite a unique opportunity and it's quite different from what I've seen happen with consultation in the past. And that is, we are going out to consult on a business case for a major project. It's not just the master plan itself, it is actually being extremely transparent to the community and saying, this is how much it costs, this is the cost benefit ratio, hey, what do you think? So I think it's great and I think it's something we should be doing. I'd also just like to emphasise that the report makes it quite clear about communicating and the messaging will be provided to manage expectations. And just to reiterate that we have professional community engagement experts on staff whose job it is is managing expectations of the community. So I have complete faith in their capability to make sure that's the case. And it also, the report emphasises very strongly that the next step pending the consultation is to seek funding from other government agencies to seek co-funding commitments. So I seek my colleagues' support.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? And that's unanimous, thank you very much. I'll declare that carried, thank you. And there being no items at eight point three for financial management, we shall move to eight point four governance, eight point four point one, the quarterly report. Do we have a mover? Councillor Chong, thank you, and a seconded councillor Hunter. Thank you, councillor Chong. Thank you. Councillor Hunter?
Nothing further to add.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor James?
On page twenty of the quarterly report, it refers to the Kangaroo Bay Wharf site. And at a meeting on the twentieth of March twenty twenty-three, council reaffirmed its decision of the twenty-third of January to authorise the CEO to initiate the buyback of the land from Shambrood. The process is underway. Recently, we have, there's been an advertisement in the paper that Shambrood is taking another approach to this. And it's my understanding it's a project of state significance, but it's marked to, okay, I stand corrected, it's along the lines of approaching the government with an alternative project. And that, I believe, is quite different to what has been decided upon on the buyback in relation to this council. So my question is, currently, the matter between the council and Shambrood is in the courts. And given that this is an alternative approach being made by Shambrood, does that necessarily put the matter on hold, subject to what the state government may or may not decide in relation to the alternative proposal?
Thank you, councillor James. I shall ask the CEO to reply.
Thank you for the question, councillor James. Through you, acting mayor. The application that's been made by Shambrood is an application for a major project status as distinct from a project of state significance. And it's the same application for the same project that was made previously and not supported by the previous minister for planning. The, this issue of major project status is going through a process at the moment. Council will have an opportunity to provide its feedback to the minister on that and that's been prepared at this point in time. But ultimately, there are two processes in play here, the major project process and the legal action that is ongoing. So we're still proceeding with the legal action. I'm not aware of any overlap between the two. The major project process, if it goes to completion and is supported by the government to move forward, will result in a development application. That doesn't impinge upon the legal action, which is a action in contract that's before the Supreme Court at the moment.
Thank you, CEO.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that response. The other matter is on page twenty-one in relation to Rosney Hill. And it says here in one sentence, council continued to negotiate with the proponents on a sublease for Rosney Hill site during the quarter. Is there any time or any, I'm just trying to find out when this matter may be decided upon, so, and I've got a note here, when will a decision be delivered? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, CEO.
Again, thank you for the question, councillor James. And through you, acting mayor. The head of governance and I have been working with the developers and lawyers to develop the terms of a lease and the other associated arrangements. We'll be bringing that to a confidential briefing for councillors shortly. It has been a long process and certainly something that we would have liked to have seen move quicker, but we are preparing an update for councillors in the near future.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor James, thank you.
On page five of the quarterly report, the AFL, AFLW High Performance Centre. It goes through a process here of the public meeting, over four hundred people attended, six motions were put and carried. Then there was a petition of over a thousand Clarence residents. And that was calling for an elector poll, which subsequently was conducted in accordance with the Local Government Act. And work was commenced with and followed the process in relation with TUC. And the cost of that was approximately two hundred thousand. Given that there has been so much discussion on this, and given that there has been, the community has been so actively involved in this, would it be fair to say that really indication from this council to the Department of State Growth and AFL Tasmania, that perhaps it would be more appropriate to sort of stop this division in the community and therefore recommend for them to relocate the High Performance Centre to Kingston?
I'll ask the CEO to respond.
Thank you.
Difficult in the fashion that he feels he's best able to, given that a number of those questions are really broader council matters. So only in that context, CEO.
Thank you, acting mayor. I think you've hit the nail on the head. Those are broader matters for the council and most appropriately dealt with through a notice of motion, not through a question such as this on the floor. I'm not in a position to make councillors' mind up for it.
Thank you.
Just on that, perhaps the acting mayor might like to make a comment in relation to...
Yeah, thank you, councillor James. The acting mayor would echo the exact same comments. So I hope that satisfies your interest, but ongoing discussion, notices of motion are always welcome, but not policy on the run and not by one individual. So thank you for the interest, we'll move on. No further questions, thank you very much. Councillor Warren?
And while we're on that topic, would it be appropriate to tell the community the actual cost of the elector poll now that we have that information?
Yes, we do, thank you, CEO, if you'd like to release the figure.
Thank you, acting mayor, I was waiting for that question. I can't recall the exact number off the top of my head, but it was in the order of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We were advised of that earlier this week. And we were obviously told prior, as a build up to the elector poll, that we could expect the cost to be somewhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. So it was pleasing to see that it was at the low end, not at the high end.
Thank you, CEO. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Mulder?
Thank you. First of all, compliments to the staff once again, the amount of work that must go into a report, it certainly passes the weight test, put it that way, as far as I can see. It also passes the content test in many aspects. And it's also a difficult thing to get a report like that and actually have a debate about it, because it inevitably generates into virtually a question time. So we might like to think about how we manage quarterly reports in the future, because what happens is it generates a series of questions rather than a debate upon the report itself, because it's a factual basis report and the staff do a great job of pulling together the facts. So you can't really debate the facts, you can only note them. But what we can do is, and the only reason I rise to my feet is in response to one such question in relation to the DA of Shambrood's attempt to move it through a process. Your comment was that that is a separate process to the question over the land. But fundamentally, no DA could be developed unless the owner of the land can sense to the submission of that DA, is my understanding. And in that case, should the state government compulsorily reacquire their own land that they sold to us for a dollar, whose consent would be required under those circumstances? And there could be no consent if the matter's still before the Supreme Court, unless this was the option. I bet you that changed your response.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. I'm mindful, of course, as we all should be, that we are in a legal process.
Yes.
And I'll ask the CEO to respond with that in mind.
Thank you, you took the words right out of my mouth, acting mayor. This is a complex issue, so I'm going to be very conservative with my words for the reasons that it's currently subject to litigation. But broadly speaking, the legal owner of the land, because they have a title, is Shambrood, Australia. Council has an equitable interest in that land because of the sale and development agreement that was signed that included the buyback clause. And that will, those issues will form part of our response to the minister in respect to the major project status that's being sought at the moment. That was part of our previous response as well. So we will effectively relook at a number of issues associated with that whole process, including landowner consent and who rightly has that.
Thank you. Councillor Mulder?
What that really goes to is the issue of, at this point in time, Shambrood's owners of the land have the legal capacity to consent to a development. And that, should they consent to that development, what's the situation if the Supreme Court later on says no? You don't underland.
Yep.
Probably getting into territory that I'd rather deal with offline, councillor Mulder, so I'm quite happy to provide some advice on that under separate cover if that's acceptable.
Yeah, thank you, CEO. Might I suggest for those colleagues who do have a deep and meaningful interest in discussing the details of these legal matters, that we perhaps defer those interests to a workshop or some other forum outside of the chamber, given the sensitivities of those interests?
I do appreciate that. And continuing my contributions to debate.
Continue.
Not question.
You may.
My contributions to debate is that I am somewhat bemused that council, council laws are tied to confidentiality in respect of something that is a matter of public record, namely Shambrood's submission to the Supreme Court. That's my only issue with this. If, we can't talk about it, but everyone in the world can. And we're bound by confidentiality for something that is basically public knowledge. But, you know, I put a couple of scenarios forward and I look forward to seeing how that will play out.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Walker?
I wasn't wishing to, but it is in reaction to the last couple of comments. Being those points in mind, I'd like the comfort to know that I can at the very least refer to previous comments that I've made in this chamber when these matters have come before me, should my opinion be asked on the latest, the latest iteration by Shambrood in dealing with this matter.
And I take it that you mean in respect of that question, your comments in relation to whether or not you support the development or otherwise?
Well, I've made a, I serve up a pretty good word salad in this joint from time to time, I've got plenty of...
Different point, different aspects.
And I'm just making the point, there's a lot of stuff that I've now put on the public record and I would like to be able to, at the very least, be able to quote what I've previously said, should some of these debates that are becoming live involve me.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Walker. And I'm interpreting that to mean in relation to any comments that have been made in the chamber. And I'll ask the CEO to respond in relation to the repetition of any debates that have been made in the chamber with respect to the current legal action.
Thank you, acting mayor. In respect to debate in the chamber, then clearly that's on the public record. My advice would be that whether commentary in the public arena is accepted or not, the reality is that Shambrood is only commenting about their major project application, not about the legal action, and that's the position that we're adopting as well.
Thank you, CEO. I trust that provides the clarity that colleagues need in respect of that. Are there any further speakers in relation to the motion? No, they're being done. Councillor Chong, write of reply.
Reply to most of those, I just think. My colleagues are supporting and receiving this, as always, very well thought out and laid out quarterly report.
Thank you very much, councillor Chong. I shall put the motion, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you very much, colleagues. So we shall move to item eight point four point two, customer experience strategy. Do we have a mover? Councillor Chong, seconded, councillor Hunter. Councillor Chong?
Just very briefly, we discussed this in a workshop, very happy with the result and I seek my colleagues' support in adopting the strategy.
Thank you. Councillor Hunter?
I think it's a great strategy, as I've mentioned before when it's come before us, so seeking my colleagues' support.
Do we have any further speakers? Councillor James?
A question, madam chairman, and that is through to the appropriate officer. A lot of work's gone into this and I think everybody around the table acknowledges that. So my question is to the appropriate officer, will there be a precis or a summary of what is a very, very lengthy document? And I suppose if you're looking at the KISS principle, you know, keep it simple. So may I have a sort of a response? I would appreciate a response in relation to a precis as... I would appreciate a response in relation to a precis as a synopsis or a summary that may be to able to encapsulate a lot of this stuff, as far as what people could digest in the scheme of things. So, my question is through there.
Yes, thank you councillor James. I shall ask Ms Wicks to provide a reply. Thank you, Ms Wicks.
Through you, acting mayor. Great question. This is actually quite a condensed strategy for its type, but it is something that we will consider a strategy to glance-type document when we go through the design process for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no further questions. Councillor Hume?
Thank you, acting mayor. Just want to say that it is an excellent strategy. One thing I'm looking forward to in the future, as we develop and adopt the technology, is a move towards the ability for our residents and ratepayers to self-serve on some matters, which I think for those who are confident and able to do that online, you know, will find that more convenient, being able to do things like, you know, check their rates balance in real time and, you know, check their dog registrations up to date and when their rubbish is going to be delivered. I think at some point in the future it would be great to see us developing a CRM that gives all our residents and ratepayers the ability to do that, and that's something I would really look forward to.
Thank you councillor Hume. Any further speakers? If not, write of reply, councillor Chung.
Not necessary.
No, thank you very much. I shall put the motion, all those in favour. And that's unanimous, thank you colleagues. Declare that carried. We'll move on to 8.4.3, Glebe Hill Community Battery Creation of Electricity easement to Hans Road, Howra. And I'll remind colleagues that this particular motion requires an absolute majority. And if we have a mover, councillor Warren and seconded councillor Mulder. Councillor Warren.
Thank you, acting mayor. This is really good, we've been chosen as one of the very few sites to trial this. A public battery, community battery gives an opportunity for those people who are perhaps in rental accommodation or not in a financial position to install solar panels, to have access to renewable energy. And I fully support this going ahead. It requires us to provide this easement on the land, I think, but that's certainly land that is appropriate for that purpose, so I recommend my colleagues support this.
Thank you, councillor Mulder.
I think this is a great idea. It's something certainly that we all sort of need to start thinking about. Perhaps a million solar panels firing up in, throughout the suburbs. When the sun peeks behind a cloud, it causes problems for the network and that's why, you know, batteries are there for that. But I think credit where credit's due. This was an election commitment of the federal, Australian Federal Labor Party. They got into the election. And lo and behold, I think this is one of the very rare few projects that doesn't get about three election announcements before it actually gets built or gets started. So, at least here we are, an election promise that's being delivered in the first term of the government that promised it. So, as I said, credit where credit's due. It's an interesting concept that, it's not about replacing solar panels, it's actually about capturing the energy of all the solar panels in the one thing and distributing to the community. And I'm sure that I could look at it, but it just seems to me to be an interesting concept, like it's a grid. You stick electrons in one end and somewhere, somewhere else pulls them out. How do you maintain a battery for that area? And how does that affect the bills of people in that area? I would suggest it probably doesn't. It's just a community think and that the benefits of it flow to the wider network. So, you know, it's a great idea and it's a good thing, but I think it's great, but I just don't see how it benefits that particular community especially.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Are there any further speakers? There being none. Write of reply, councillor Warren.
Only to say that there is information available on how community batteries work if councillor Mulder is interested, but I commend the recommendation to my colleagues.
Thank you. I shall put the motion, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you very much. Declare that carried. We shall now move on to 8.4.4, special committee appointments. Councillor James moving? Motion? And do we have a seconded? Councillor Goine. Councillor James?
Look, thank you, acting mayor. Look, I would like to open my comments by saying that I have been advised that councillor Walker is interested in being a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And I would like to incorporate that within the motion. And then I can lead on, if that's appropriate, because there is still a vacancy there and he has indicated that he would like to be on that committee.
If you can just resume your seat for a moment, please.
Thanks.
I shall ask councillor Walker if, in fact, that's correct.
I have advised Alderman James that, given that vacancy, he's currently sitting unfilled, that I'm prepared to step up and be on that committee.
And, okay. Can you just repeat which one you're talking, you're talking about?
It's sustainability, I better stand. It's Sustainability Advisory Committee.
So, yes, filling the vacancy of that particular one.
Yes.
But not the disability.
It's still a...
Yeah, okay.
From your one obligation, the one thing you do.
Yeah, so councillor James, you're moving the amendment that we make the addition with councillor Walker being included to fill that position. Procedurally, I'm advised that councillor Goine is the seconded, would need to be happy to second that. Thank you very much. So, that will now become substantive motion, if you would like to speak to that now.
Yes, thank you very much. And look, thank you for that comment and I'm sure councillor Walker will be a great asset to that committee. Now, part B is obviously been noted and then, and also part C is obviously a follow-on from B, so to C. But I would like to just make one comment as chair of the Trax and Trails Working Group. Now, we made a decision at that committee meeting some months ago that it would be more appropriate for the committee to be under the umbrella of the Active Living Advisory Committee. And of course, we did send that up the chain to your group acting mayor. And as a result of that, it's now been confirmed and that's a great thing. There is one other matter that I would like to raise in relation to this, and that is that we have passed a number of motions at the Trax and Trails Working Group. And we know we are not in a position to be able to table those minutes, because that's not the appropriate mechanism that's been set up within these advisory committees versus working groups. So, I would seek support. And I did raise this on Friday at their briefing, that if it's possible that the minutes of the Trax and Trails Working Group, as they are, you know, channeled upstairs to the advisory group, that perhaps from time to time, those minutes could be tabled at a council meeting. I know there's no, nothing in the constitution or within the ambit of this working group and versus advisory group, but, you know, a lot of those decisions are really in support of what the officers have put forward in relation to what they see as the appropriate projects that need to be supported and, and once the budget process determines that. So, I'm just wondering as to whether or not it does take, or can we, can we resolve, madam mayor, acting mayor, to have, to have that matter incorporated and probably presented time to time at council meetings, that's the minutes of the Trax and Trails Working Group?
Yes, thank you councillor James. I'm going to invite the CEO to speak to this briefly, but as you might recall, there was some discussion at the agenda brief around the constitutions as they currently exist, not precluding that but not mandating it. And I'll get the CEO to expand on that a little further.
Thank you, acting mayor. You're absolutely right. So, there's no direct reference to working group minutes and how they're reported within the special committee constitutions. The appropriate approach, there's essentially two options. If there was something of particular note that a special committee wishes to record in their minutes, they could obviously discuss those working group minutes and report specifically in their minutes on a particular matter. Or alternatively, they could note the working group minutes and annex those to their own minutes and report those through council. And that was, so there's two ways that that can be dealt with, without the need to resort to amending constitutions.
Thank you councillor James. Councillor Goine?
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I figured I should probably defend it, since it just looks like I'm resigning from everything in that. But I did actually have quite a considerable amount of committees and that I'm still on the Active Living Advisory Committee and a few others. And I support the recommendation and thank you for other people for stepping up to the plate, because having a small human isn't always easy in these meetings.
Thank you councillor Goine. Are there any further, councillor Warren?
Thank you, acting mayor. I just wanted to put on the record too, that my resignation from those two committees was not due to any lack of passion for the topic, but also a heavy workload and I'm still on, I think it's six active committees which meet regularly. If the community members are interested in looking at who's doing what, the complete list of committee membership is on the council website, under the section to do with members. One of the reasons I resigned from these two particular committees was that I felt that chairs, councillor Hunter and councillor Hume respectively, had them well in control. And I would certainly highly commend councillor Walker's joining the Sustainable Advisory Committee, which is run particularly well, it's got a very active, very knowledgeable community group and excellent support from officers and excellent chairing by councillor Hunter. And while I will miss being part of that, I know that it will continue to do really good work in my absence.
Thank you councillor Warren. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Walker?
Thank you. Starting on my first term, then on my second term, on my third term, I would call for review of committees. And it was the third term where that review actually took place. And may say careful what you wish for, because the committees were reviewed, most of those committees were turned into working groups and a new layer was imposed with committees overseeing working groups. Look, I think it's really important to note that these groups have a role in informing councils, if you like, advising councils. And there's a variety of ways that we can be getting community advice, getting community input, and this is a structure. But I don't know that it's working ideally, because ultimately, the community elects us to be decision-makers and they like us being decision-makers, because if we're getting it wrong, then they preserve the right to reject us at a following election. It's important that the decision-making process remain that way, so that accountability is still available to members of the community. And I would say with this structure, I have a lot of concerns. This is the first time where we've seen difficulties with the workload, difficulties filling positions, something that didn't happen in previous terms of council. And so, what's the result of that? Well, the workload's harder. And I'm not saying that a structure like this allows for backdoor bureaucratic bolstering in decision-making processes, but others might be able to infer it. And I would just say that the primacy needs to be held with us, so that, again, if we're not doing it right, the community gets to fire us. And I'm not sure that this new level of oversight is achieving what it was intended or purported to do when it was put in place. So, I'll do my best to help try and make things work under the current structures. But my concerns that I've held throughout the whole time haven't been allayed, they've only increased.
Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor Mulder?
Thank you. And I do accept the fact from councillor Walker that we've added more, not less, and that we now have working groups that struggle to have their voice heard, because it's got to be filtered through the strategic committee, which is aligned with all these things. And I can understand how, you know, from a business process point of view, that makes it very smooth and functioning. These committees exist so that the voice of the community can be heard in the early development of proposals, properties and strategic stuff. And as we all sit here and we all talk about our heavy workloads on committees, I'll be my first to put hand up and I'm saying, I'm very careful about which ones. And I was almost looking for an excuse to bail out of the one that I had, but I feel some commitment. If we've, instead of having multiple members and multiple layers of working groups, if we got the working, if we got a series of committees together, and the point is to listen to the community, why do we need two, three members on a committee and then end up with an additional workload of any workgroups that flow between them? If the idea is to listen to the community, then we shouldn't be stacking those committees with elected representatives. Because any decisions or, sorry, they don't make decisions, any recommendations that flow up through the process eventually hit, first of all, out there in the briefing rooms, and then they come into the council, where we all get to make the decision anyway. So, maybe a way out of this is to look at people with heavy workloads and suggest maybe that we have one council representative on each of these strategic groups. And maybe if there are a number of working groups, we bring another member of the council on to share the workload of attending those working group meetings. But this is high-level strategic stuff. And I commend the work that councillor Hunter does on the committee that I serve on, and that's the Sustainable Sustainability Committee. And it's got a very, very broad rebit, as you can imagine, that's sustainable. I mean, everything in the world has to be sustainable, or else we're going to hell in a handbasket. So, my real suggestion is, is that look at your workload commitments, discover that we're there to listen to the community, not tell them what we think they should tell us, which is the way committees tend to work. But, and not yours, councillor Hunter. And that we look at that workload that's associated with that. We're on those committees to listen. The staff are there to guide them, but we're there to listen and to bring that feedback and try to bring the different views together in a collective means. So, you know, yep, I've got a pretty light workload committee, but I hesitate to stand up before the chair, the esteemed chair of that committee, in case she has a different view about my contribution. the esteemed chair of that committee, in case she has a different view about my contribution to that committee. But that, that's my only observation about these committees. If you've got too big a workload, think about what you're doing there and why, and why you're really there.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Are there any further speakers? If not, write a reply, councillor James?
Thank you. The, I'll be very brief, and that is that I seek my colleagues to support the motion with that slight amendment to include in, in part A, councillor Walker, to the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And having said that, I look forward, I look forward to the advisory committees presenting the minutes of their meetings. We have councillor Kennedy, and she is on the Bel Reve Arts Advisory Committee, and she, time to time, present minutes, that's an advisory meeting, advisory committee, as the other members of the advisory committees. So why not have the chair of the active living advisory committee present minutes as the other working, sorry, the other advisory committees doing likewise? I look forward to seeing the tabling of those minutes, and hopefully there may be a couple of lines there incorporating the tracks and trails working group. I seek council support.
Thank you, councillor James. And just before I put the amended motion, I would point out that the Bel Reve Committee is actually a standalone committee, it doesn't have the same status as the working groups, and that's why those minutes are tabled in the way that they are. But nevertheless, I'm sure those conversations that you're interested in will continue to be discussed through the working committees and the overarching committees. So I shall put the motion, all those in favour. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much, colleagues. We shall now move to item number nine, motions on notice, 9.1 councillor Mulder Palestinian situation. And I'm aware before calling a seconder, I understand councillor Mulder has some possible amendments and that he might like to walk through those before seeking a seconder?
Okay. Just for interest, just for members, I have listened. I have listened to the concerns of my other councillors, and I do agree that although there's a precedent for the kind of motion that I put forward, in which I was condemning things, calling for things, and, or councillors calling and noting things, that although there's a precedent for that sort of emotion, I hear your concerns, and I have amended the motion accordingly to say that council will note these things. We will note the condemnation of October the 7th rather than condemning it, than condemning it ourselves. And that we will, we will note support for a two-state solution in accordance with the United Nations, that we will note calls for immediate ceasefire, and that we will note calls for United States of America to suspend offensive things. The reason I've changed it to notes is because people were concerned that we, as a council, were actually calling for these things rather than noting the calls for these things. So the motion is amended in those terms, and I will provide the, the CEO and the corporate secretary with the actual words, as I've already discussed with them.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. And a second, councillor Warren, on the basis of those amended words, councillor Mulder?
Thanks, Timit. Having noted those concerns. So what has this conflict got to do with this tiny shire at the bottom of the world, El Fin de Mondo? Nothing much, except that one of our own has chosen to go public with a very one-sided media outburst that has caused angst and division. Not only in Hobart's local Arabic community, but also in the multicultural community, and indeed I've had contacts from within the Israeli community, because it's a big divisive issue there as well as witnessed by the major demonstrations and things occurring there. Neither was the original most version of this motion without precedent, and I refer to those members of the last council, a motion discussing the outright condemnation of the Russian invasion of Ukraine. The motive for this motion is to show, show our community that at least some of their councillors have a balanced view on this vexed issue. And that that view accords with international law and policy that we feel for historic, that we feel for the residents of our city who have historical connections, and both Israeli and Palestinian residents have family, friends, who are directly impacted, both sides, by the war that's going on, or the battle that's going on inside the Gaza Strip, and in the West Bank, and spilling into Lebanon and the Levant. Now, for those who believe we should stick to our knitting, I respect that position. But I implore you not to vote no, but to abstain. It has the same effect in terms of the thing, but then this is only noting something, so it's not that critical. But what it does do, if, if you can't vote yes, then at least abstain, because it shows that you don't disagree with a balanced approach, and that you do have empathy for the distress being caused to both sides, even if you think it's not our knitting. From the river to the sea, it's quite clear that Palestine should be three, Gaza, West Bank and Israeli.
Thank you. Councillor Warren?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. And I thank councillor Mulder for bringing this amended motion. Some people, including some of my colleagues, may say that this is not council business, and that we should confine ourselves to rates, roads and rubbish. But the Local Government Act clearly states that one of the functions of council is to provide for the health, safety and welfare of the community. It's unfortunate that some people in our community may have been made to feel less safe and less welcome following an injudicious statement after the devastating attack by Hamas last October, which I condemn outright. Let me preface any further comments by saying that I'm in no way an expert on Middle Eastern politics, nor do I believe any of my colleagues to be. It's a complicated conflict going back many decades. Latest figures place the current death toll since the 7th of October last year as more than 42,000 people, of whom 40,000 of the 42,000, 40,602 were Palestinians, 1,478 Israeli, including 116 journalists. Though the actual number is likely to be far higher given the catastrophic destruction of basic services and infrastructure in Gaza. It's difficult to characterize this as anything other than a disproportionate response bordering on genocide. It's also important to note that any statement condemning the actions of Israel are confined to the decisions taken by the Israeli government and are in no way anti-Semitic. Indeed, this week, we've seen an uprising of Israeli people also demanding a ceasefire. In the last few weeks, we've seen the outbreak of polio, which means the ramifications of this conflict will continue long after the fighting has stopped. I sincerely hope that the long-awaited peace deal will be successfully brokered in the next few days, but I don't believe any compassionate government can continue to supply instruments of war to Israel. In October, before the attack, the doctor's son of a friend of mine was working for Medicines Sans Frontières, Doctors Without Borders, in Gaza. This organisation operates in conflict zones. The people of Gaza were living in a conflict zone before the actions of Hamas and Israel's retaliatory strike. In early 2023, another Tasmanian friend spent three months on a humanitarian aid project to Palestine. Their role was to bear witness to the daily atrocities, threats and intimidation by Israeli soldiers against Palestinian people, including children. I support the experts' call for a two-state solution, which allows Palestinians to live free of this oppression as the only hope for a conflict-free future. The dehumanising of the Palestinian, Palestinian people has long been a feature of this ongoing conflict, and we should not accept any part of that here in Clarence. People of any nationality, ethnicity or religion who have chosen to settle here should be free to live in a safe and peaceful life without fear of discrimination. We are a welcoming city. That means speaking out when statements are made that are inconsistent with that message. I urge my colleagues to support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Further speakers on this matter? Councillor James?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I will not support this. And for the reason being that it's not in our area of responsibility or to represent our community in relation to this matter. We have other matters, more serious, more important to deal with. And I can't recall, and I stand corrected, that our federal, state and territory governments, I can't recall them coming out and discussing this in a balanced, as has been proposed by the mover of this, of this motion. And, and the question I have on that is, why haven't they? And I think the reason for that is that it's so divisive. It's going to create too much conflict within the communities of the state and territories. And the federal government, I can't recall them actually coming out or having a motion being discussed. I stand corrected, but it hasn't hit the papers, and I like to read the papers daily and, and just keep, keep abreast of this. And we don't need another divisive matter in this place, in this community. In late October last year, when we were discussing, when we had representations from the Department of State Growth, I made it clear to my colleagues around the table, I don't like this, it's going to divide the community. We really don't need this. We've got Rosney Hill on the go, we've got Kangaroo Bay on the go, we've got the boulevard on the go, we've got Flagstaff-Gully Link Road, which is not on the go. I threw that into the woodwork and, and, and what's happened? In some ways, I've, I believe that I have been proven correct because that particular matter became so divisive. And it basically took this community to great lengths to be able to decide on what are we about? And I'm not going to go through this motion, discuss any points, even though it's been noted, because I don't think it's necessary for us to even consider it. Because it's going to, in my opinion, divide the community, because there'll be people in for and against, there's no doubt about that. And the next thing we'll know, if it does get up, they'll say, well, what's this council? Are they really trying to, to look after us as far as, you know, what we are trying to achieve in this marvellous city of Clarence? And it's going to do completely the opposite, in my opinion. So, look, freedom of speech, freedom of putting motions up for, for consideration, yes, look, that's the name of the game. But this, in my opinion, is out of order. It shouldn't be, well, it's going to be debated, it's been debated. And therefore, I'm going to raise my hand as high as I can and vote no. I won't be abstaining. I'll be voting no, because I don't believe it's appropriate for us to discuss this.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Goine?
I would like to add that there is nothing more divisive than saying that, that war, there are more important matters than war. In fact, I wasn't planning on speaking because as councillor Mulder said, I will be abstaining for the reasons mentioned. And as councillor Warren said, you know, war, war goes on longer, there'll be polio. However, Plato does say that only the dead have seen the end of war. I daily live with the consequences of war. I do not believe it is a conversation for this place. I do not see that there is a right or a wrong in the deaths of any person, and I certainly do not see that there is many more important matters. So I will be abstaining from this.
Thank you, councillor Goine. Are there further speakers? They're being done. Write a, oh, sorry, beg your pardon, councillor Walker at the last?
Well, we may have our biggest international audience tonight. I imagine Homanian Iran, Sinwar in Rafah, Netanyahu, Netanyahu rather, in Tel Aviv, I expect, all tuning in. He's probably got Mark Gregev there to translate Australian for him. Maybe Ben Shapiro's delayed his school drop-off with his kids, or Safadine Amos has, yeah, withheld his breakfast because a council in the smallest state of the federation is going to bring peace to the Middle East. Wyoming is the smallest state in the US, so I guess Clarence is the equivalent of whatever comes after Cheyenne Council, Chaneyville or something, maybe. I note the speaker's position that one of the motivations is a opinion piece put by the mayor in his personal capacity in the paper in recent times. And nobody has to agree with that. He didn't say it was on council's behalf. And I think if people have views, then that is a forum where you can make them. And I would have thought that that might have been a good spot for the mover of the motion to maybe make his counter arguments. There's no problem with doing that. There's no problem with attending a peaceful assembly. There's no problem with changing a Facebook page tile. And it's reasonable to bring up the Ukraine motion. Don't accept any precedent theory. I was uncomfortable with that motion, irrespective of its intent, but I did end up supporting it. And I don't think I should have. I think that that was, that was wrong, because it wasn't the right place. It's not council business. I guess, though, with the last term of council, you could at least make a case that council wasn't jacking up rates in big lumps, because it didn't have the fortitude to regularly scrutinise all aspects of the business in budget deliberations and then make some tough calls afterwards. You'd also make a case that we were actually delivering a hardway service back then as well. So this term, we've delivered very little other than community division since the last elections. And, you know, you probably don't need the intelligence gathering depth or the data analytical skills of Mossad to conclude that this council kind of sucks from time to time. The overwhelming majority of our residents, however, are great people with very reasonable expectations for what their rates should provide for them. Reliable services and well-maintained infrastructure. I'm pretty sure most people, like me, want a council that just stays in its lane and focuses on its job. Because when a council is working well, residents barely even think about it. And that's what we should be striving for. This isn't the time, and it's certainly not the forum for this motion. People should be able to hold differing opinions and hold respectful, good faith discussions. But the dumbest way to consider complex, insoluble international matters is by council debates. Five minutes each to make a statement, but no time or mechanisms to actually, in good faith, engage and discuss. Have we really got our house in order to the level that we can now start focusing on trying to fix international matters? I don't think so. But I do think democracy is really fragile. And from what we're witnessing interstate, in the case of Australia, I think it's fraying at parts. And some of the things we're witnessing, in many ways, feel quite reminiscent of the 1930s. Now, our community is keeping together better than most, but we do have issues in our own backyard that we need to focus on. I'm appalled at some of the belligerent, indolent, racist graffiti that some of our community are subjected to, that we've endeavoured to make an effort to address, but the management of Tasnet works couldn't give us stuff. But the management of Tasnet works couldn't give us stuff. I'm frustrated by that. I'm disappointed by that. And what can councils do? Well, they're good at getting on top of things like that fast. We have good staff with good skillsets to do that. That's the way we deal with these matters.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Councillor Hume?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Look, I, I do accept the argument that there are some things where council doesn't have a, a direct responsibility. You know, we, that we can represent our, our community on. But I think there's a limit to that. And that limit is the, the sort of matters where, you know, it, it, it relates in, in some way to, to our responsibilities and it's something that, that we can actually influence. So, for example, I've, my one notice of motion that I've moved during this term was in regard to lobbying the state government in relation to the issue of restrictive covenants, things that, you know, that were unnecessarily and partially discriminatory against, you know, certain classes of people. And that's something where, you know, because it's the, the state government, we do have some clout. And it does relate to issues around sort of land use management, which is, you know, related to some of the business of council. I think it's a bit of a, a stretch to, you know, start getting into issues like the situation in the Middle East. I understand we're just noting it. But really, as I see, this is, this is outside the scope of what we should deal with, what it makes sense for us to deal with. I really see it as outside our, our purview. And particularly on an issue that is very divisive. And I can give a couple of, I won't get into the substance of the motion, but I could give a couple of examples of where, you know, statements in this motion could be, would be argued by, you know, people supporting one side of the conflict or the other and saying that it's not fair and balanced. Even though it, you know, certainly appears to be. But in relation to councillor Mulder's suggestion that, you know, if you don't support council getting involved in this motion, then just abstain. I also do concern myself with the the reputational risk for council that, you know, we're seen to be focusing on issues that are just well outside the things that I believe our community really wants us to be focusing on. And so for that reason, I, like councillor James, will be voting against the motion. Also, I've never abstained on a motion and in, in all my time on this council and will continue that practice.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Councillor Hunter?
This one's really challenged me and I very much appreciate councillor Mulder's intention and sentiment by bringing this forward. But I agree with councillor Hume and a few other colleagues is I don't necessarily know it's the place for it. And while I do appreciate councillor Warren's noting that we are responsible for the health and wellbeing of the community, which I fully do support. I'm not sure if the motion as it's presented makes me comfortable that that's what we are providing here to our community members. I do appreciate that councillor Mulder did change the wording to, to noting, which makes me somewhat more comfortable with it. But I'm also just, I don't feel completely confident in my understanding of the situation to really make a call on it in this forum. So I, I too really don't agree with abstaining from things that come to us. And I haven't done it before, but I think in this instance, I'm, I'm going to abstain. Because I'm not totally comfortable either way.
Thank you. Any further contributions? They're being done. Councillor Mulder, right of reply?
Contrary to some of the contributions, this motion has got nothing to do with trying to resolve this conflict. It has not been going on since 1947. It's been going on for the last 5,000 years as different people assumed by the word of God that because they occupied the place at one point in time, it is theirs forever. This is not what this is about. And if you don't think it's core business of this council to offer our empathy and support for residents of this city who are suffering, grieving, feeling alienated. And I don't just mean the Gazians, I mean the West Banks. I mean the Israelis who have turned out in huge numbers because they too see that we are on the precipice of something awful. I'm not about solving the world's problems. To draw parallels with motions like this and the rise of Nazism in 1930s, now that's offensive. That is offensive. And to sit here and say that the, that the concern and the feelings of alienation of members of our community are none of our business. But that graffiti on a Tasnet work substation is something that you were appalled with, but unfortunately can't do anything about. To draw those parallels, that is offensive to those people who have lost family and friends, residents of our city who have lost families and friends in a fight. What I am trying to say with this motion is we aren't trying to solve the problem. But neither are we alienating you. Whichever side you might be on, we are saying we understand, we welcome you and we don't hate you because you're on this side or the other side. So many people, you have to go to them and say, what do you think about it? Because they are feeling shell-shocked and they are feeling withdrawn. And they don't feel that they are welcome in our city. Core business, roads, rates, rubbish and the welfare of our citizens. And with a simple motion like this, that we note their concerns. That we note the suffering they're grieving going through. No, we are not trying to solve the war in the Middle East. That's been a 5,000-year problem that isn't about to go away. And you've got to be very careful when you're talking about this. This is not Judaism versus Islamism. This is...
Thank you, councillor Mulder. I appreciate the contributions in relation to this matter. I shall now put the amended motion. All those in favour? And against? And abstaining? So we could put hands up for that, please? And declare the motion lost? Thank you very much. A very interesting debate. We'll move on now to councillor question time. We have no questions on notice and therefore also no answers to questions on notice. So we'll move to 10.3. Answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting. And I note that those answers to questions from the previous meeting are listed in the agenda. So we'll move to 10.4, questions without notice. So are there questions? No problem. So we're moving to questions without notice now. So I'll now ask councillors on, from the floor, if they have questions. We'll start with councillor Kennedy this evening. Councillor Chong?
Mayor, in relation to the Richmond playground, can I please get an update on the status of the equipment that's been removed, when it's likely to be put back? And also the status of the, the new improved playground at, at some point, where we were, we're up to in the planning for that?
Thank you, councillor Chong. Ms Coon?
Through you, acting mayor. Yes, the equipment had been removed due to damage to the pre-existing equipment. And we've ordered the new equipment and I'm told that it should be installed roughly in about seven weeks. We're just waiting for the installer to be available.
Thank you. Councillor Chong, a second? No? Councillor Warren? No? Councillor Goine?
Just ask, have we received any of the geotechnical reports yet from DSG in regards to the High Performance Centre?
Thank you. See you.
Thank you. Sorry, that question was answered at the start of the meeting. But the short answer is no.
Sorry, I must have zoned out.
No supplementary? No? Councillor Walker?
Yes, my question's in relation to a motion that I moved and was supported by my colleagues, which I'm grateful, grateful for, around hard waste, where we are looking at some of the alternative mechanisms being done interstate. Just after a progress report on how that data collation's coming along and when you think there might be something to present to us.
Thank you. See you.
Thank you. There's a few aspects to that, councillor Walker. And if it's okay, I'll, I'll take that on notice and provide advice in the weekly briefing report.
Thank you. Any further, councillor Walker? No? Councillor James?
Mayor, my first question is in relation to the current state of the upgrade of School Road at Sanford. It has been a matter that's been on the agenda for some time. And my question is, are we still waiting on a subdivision to enable some of those blocks that are but School Road to be developed? And hence, there would be a frontages contribution from that developer in order to be able to get that section of School Road sealed.
Thank you, councillor James. See you.
Thank you for the question, councillor James. Through you, acting mayor. I'll take that on notice. Thank you.
Councillor James?
Yes. The second question is in relation to the City Heart. Given that there may be a change in direction in relation to this. And in fact, council has already spent in excess of $400,000 as part of the consultation project to come up with a draft City, City Heart. Are we ready to move if by some chance that the High Performance Centre is relocated to Kingston? That we can move ahead and therefore pursue a lot of those recommendations that were included in the draft plan? Some of which was the cultural centre? And also active and passive recreation, walks, trails and other activities that the public would be able to enjoy and also enhance?
Thank you, councillor James. See you.
Thank you for the question. Through you, mayor. Yes.
That's very good news. I'm very pleased to hear that.
Councillor Hume, nothing? Councillor Hunter? Councillor Mulder, question?
I have two.
Thank you.
I've got heaps, but I'm not allowed to ask them. The first one is on a serious matter of concern. And it relates to decisions recently made by the CEO to ban an elderly, admittedly activist couple for basically disrupting a meeting, although there may have been, I, I can't recall any threats being made, but apparently they were. On the basis that the workplace was becoming unsafe. At the following meeting, the mayor threatened a member of the gallery with a similar fate, namely banning for the, for making what were barely audible interjective comments. My question is, and of course I have to direct it to you, Madam Acting Mayor, but what is the definition of safety in the workplace? If a mere barely audible comment can be considered to make the place, the workplace unsafe and therefore result in a threatened banning?
Thank you, councillor Mulder. There are quite a few aspects to the commentary that you've made that I think probably best left for discussions for another time. But what I would like to do is ask the CEO to respond to some questions around definitions and workplace safety. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, councillor Mulder and through you, acting mayor. I think there's an important distinction to make. In this chamber, the mayor is responsible for conducting the meeting in accordance with the meeting procedures. And the meeting procedures provide opportunities or options for the mayor to address particular behaviour, including asking people to be removed from the chamber if that's required. The other element to the, that doesn't rest with the, the mayor relates to health and safety issues. As the CEO of this organisation, as I've explained before, I'm responsible ultimately for council's conduct of a safe workplace. And in the context that we were talking about, in respect to the ban that I imposed, that was a decision made by me in respect to my duties under the Work Health and Safety Act, and there is no overlap with the mayor.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Mulder?
By way of supplementary commentary, I was drawing the connection between your right, your responsibility and the definition of what workplace safety, given the fact the mayor on the public record threatened those, that, that informed that person that if he continued to interject, he would suffer the same fate as people you had ejected because of the, but they made the unplace workplace safe. So it's, it's the question of the mayor's interpretation of audible comments as constituting an unsafe workplace, which would result in banning. That was the point. So, and I'm sure the commentary will, will come through.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. If we get on to the second question, please?
My second question relates to the plethora of Yes campaign signs that still litter the streets around this particular city. Now, one of our members has, you know, is, is an admittedly, and I've expressed the concerns, but of course, it's nothing unlawful. The concern that a member of this council is on an organising committee for the Yes campaign. And has organised a very selective invite only to councillors, which I've rejected, but is such a, an event to thank volunteers? Appropriate when the volunteers have yet to do the job of removing some of the campaign posters?
Councillor Mulder, I'm not actually sure there's a question in there that's relevant to council business. Perhaps can you explain what you're driving at?
Is it appropriate that the, that the Clarence Yes campaign posters? Sorry, is it appropriate us for individual councillors to be hosting thank you events to volunteers who have yet to remove the Yes campaign posters?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure that that is a question.
Will the Yes campaign remove their posters?
Okay. So, look, I don't, again, I don't think unless there's a technical reason the CEO might like to advise us of that requires them to take them down. I don't know that, that, that it's otherwise council business, but apart from that technical side, which I shall now seek advice on.
Thank you, acting mayor. I will take this on notice, but with the caveat that my understanding is that the current state of play is that if they were election signs, they would be required to be removed within a certain period of time. Any other sign is simply a private sign. Anything that is on council land or state land may be subject to a different requirement. But I will, I will research that and provide a response in the weekly briefing report. I'll go one step further. If there are any signs, yes or no, that should be removed, we will correspond with the appropriate people to make that happen.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Mulder, is this supplementary comment?
A supplementary question?
Well, no, you've had two questions.
A supplementary to...
To this one, as long as connected to this one.
This is question two B.
Okay, with latitude, councillor Mulder?
Is it a fact that such signs are actually unlawful under the planning scheme?
Unless Mr Ma has a, has a response.
We'll, we'll need to take that on notice if that's okay, acting mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Thank you, colleagues. That's bringing an end to questions without notice. Um, thank you, colleagues. Um, that's bringing an end to, uh, questions without notice. We'll move to um, at the closed, uh, section of our meeting. I call for a motion to move into closed.
Can I just express my appreciation for the considered respectful and appropriate manner in which you've conducted this meeting?
You may, and I will take it in the spirit that it was delivered. Thank you very much. Um, so we have a mover for moving into closed, uh, meeting, moved by councillor Kennedy, seconded by councillor Goine. Um, all those in favour? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, can I please thank, uh, you, all those members of the public, uh, that have attended in person this evening and to those that are joining us via the live stream? Can we please, uh, end the live stream? Good night.